We would like to take this time and pause for just a moment. A moment of solemn prayer in honor of former older woman Shirley Frankel who passed away this morning.
Please bestow your graces and blessings upon us in our city. Teach us the right things and open our eyes that we may see wonderful things that can benefit our citizens. Give us the strength and power to help ourselves and others. Help us to listen carefully to the words others speak.
Mayor Stafford.
Here.
Alderman Lincoln.
Here.
Alderman Sahaski.
Here.
Alderman Weston.
Here.
Alderman Sherman.
Here.
Alderman Thompson.
Here.
Alderman Woodward.
Here.
Present, Your Honor.
Item one.
Whereas the clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing at this meeting at 7:00 PM relative to a proposed local law which would amend certain sections of C-29 of the city charter entitled Powers and Duties of the City Administrator, Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Note of information, what I am suggesting is a change are twofold. The first change would be a change in the position title, changing the position from city administrator to executive assistant to the mayor. Within that change, there are very few changes to the, to this local law that is proposed. The largest being that under the powers and duties of that position, right now it, it states that the city administrator will supervise all city employees through the department heads. What that had occurred with, because of this sentence, is all department heads have been answering to the city administrator rather than the mayor. In talking with the former mayors that suggested this position and know how important the position is, they hadn't envisioned this. They had envisioned the position working with the other city employees with the department heads still reporting to the mayor. And what in fact they did is put another layer into bureaucracy. The change that I am proposing will remove that layer of bureaucracy and instead of saying shall supervise all city employees, shall say, shall coordinate the efficient and effective activities of city employees through the department heads as required. That'll still allow the department heads to report to the mayor as it was in the past and as I feel that it should be. With that statement, public hearing is open. Any questions from the council?
No, Your Honor. I've been involved in this, study this for a long time, and the way I feel about it is you're the mayor and the assistant was intended to, to help the mayor do his duties. And if ever a new administration wants to change it, they can change it. Do you understand what I mean? This is not, everyone knows how change is. We change when we want to change it. So if this is what you feel you need, Your Honor, then I think we should support it.
Thank you. Any other input? Yes.
Fran Foley, what I'm wondering is you said the assistant to the manager is, to the mayor is going to coordinate the employees?
Coordinate through the department head rather than supervise. Work more as a coordinator with the department heads. We have very competent department heads. They need to have the authority to run their departments and be held responsible for their departments.
Mm-hmm.
What I see, one of the, one of the jobs of the executive assistant to the mayor is coordinating these efforts, such as if we're going to have a project where more than one department is involved, such as paving. But before we do the paving, we have to make sure that all the infrastructure work under that street is done so that we don't go and pave the street and two weeks later have to dig it up to fix a water line.
Mm-hmm.
So what I'm looking is one of the responsibilities. His main responsibilities have not changed. They are verbatim as they are right now, except for the supervision of city employees. I see him more as a coordinator, working together with the department heads to get the job done.
Well, I just want to be sure that there's enough input there so that there is, well, supervision or something so that the city knows what's going on other than just the department head.
Well, definitely. The department heads are still going to have to report to the mayor as they have in the past. That is, that was not a change. All, what happened with this position is the department heads were reporting to the city administrator instead of the mayor.
Yeah, okay.
This is just going to eliminate that. They're all going to work together.
Because we still need, even over the department head, we still need to know what they're doing, you know?
Oh, definitely.
Okay.
I definitely need to know what they're doing.
We can't leave it just up to a department head.
No, 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 no. It's, it's who the department head reports to. And right now, under the, the present way, they report to the city administrator. But the city administrator isn't the elected official.
So he will also have the other duties, like what is the funding and...
He still has all the duties that he has right now.
Okay.
None of those changed. Those are all the same.
Okay, thank you.
I declare public hearing closed. Due to a law requirement that the council required, is required to have in their hand the proposed law for at least five days prior to voting on this, we are not going to be able to vote on this issue tonight. We'll have to vote on it. We'll get it on the agenda for the next meeting for a vote. Item two. Do we have to do it to a specific meeting?
Okay. Now therefore be it resolved that this common council hereby defers any action on this proposed local law until a future meeting.
I'll move it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Carry.
The city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise at this meeting of January 20th relative to proposed local law which would repeal section C-16 of the city charter or which would amend C-16 of the city charter entitled Methods of Salary Payment Fees and Preparatitudes. Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
The reason for this hearing is based on a resolution that was passed at the meeting December 30th, where a resolution was passed authorizing that all people, be paid, all city employees other than the monthly employees, be paid weekly instead of bi-weekly. At that time, we had some employees being paid weekly, some bi-weekly, some monthly. On the request or the advice of the clerk in the Chamberlain's office that does the payroll, she advised that it would be easier if everybody other than the monthly payees all get paid once a week. It would be easier for her. The council approved and passed the resolution. After the resolution was passed, it was brought to our attention that the city charter, section C-16, states that the salaries of city officers shall be payable in bi-weekly installments. So we need to adjust this section of the charter to authorize the payment on a weekly Any questions? Any input? Declare public hearing closed.
Now therefore be resolved that the proposed local law amending section C-16 of the Fulton City Charter is hereby approved.
Move it. Second thing. All in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Carry.
Whereas the city clerk was authorized and directed to advertise for this meeting of January 20th, 7:00 PM relative to a proposed local law which would adopt chapter 23 of the Fulton City Code entitled Recreation Commission/Recreation Committee, Mayor Stafford will declare the hearing open.
Many people have approached me and advised me that they thought it was in the best interest of the city to have a recreation commission. We had had one in the past and a number of people thought it was a good idea to reinstate this commission. Since that time, others have mentioned to me that we could get the same results by having a committee instead of a commission. So I am looking for input now from everyone as to what do you feel would work best to assist the council on recreation matters?
I would be a Democratic commission or a committee.
The way it was explained to me by an alderman is you don't have to pay a committee.
All right, Your Honor. The recreation commission had certain powers and stuff that, you know, that it was empowered to them aside from the council once it was done. Committees would be somewhat different. They would be, in other words, they would be a liaison to the administration and...
Depending on what we granted them when we put them...
Right, right. Does that have your feelings, Brad?
Actually, one of the, to go back to the compensation, the, the resolu, the local law that we looked at from Geneva said that their, their members would serve without compensation. So it's, some do and some don't. We've got the Seneca Falls local law, we've, we've just got that, so we're going to be looking at that. As far as myself, I'm the one that's, that's very supportive of a committee. It's, it's less, it's, it's more restrictive. The commission is more restrictive and the way I, the way we looked at things here, and it wasn't as effective before, but the problem with the commission before that we had was that they had the powers but they didn't have the authority to expend the money. So with all the good intentions that, that were on that commission, they felt very powerless that because they couldn't, they had no, no control over the money. I think a committee, I think the, the support that we need, we've got a recreation committee that you're going to set up through the council.
Yes.
And I think what the recreation superintendent is looking for is the support of his programs and a more of a volunteer group of people that would help him, advise him and help him run his programs and think of some new ideas. The commission I looked at is, is very restrictive and I think that we could do the same job with a committee.
My name is Donald Walsh. What I'd like to know on this committee and commission, or whatever you want to call it. He had a lot of problems before with his committee and everything. I've been to him many meetings and many arguments about this thing. In the last two years, everything, thing seems to be running pretty smooth. The common council handled the problem and it started to smooth out a little bit. Now you're getting back into the same thing. I'm just wondering if it's going to be another argument about this committee or commission.
Well, I would like to think not. What I'm looking for is a group of concerned individuals from throughout the city that would like to work on recreation initiatives, to improve the recreation within our city and come and advise the council what they find. Do the background work for the council on the recreation issues. Work with the recreation commissioner to try to improve our facilities so we can have the best we possibly can.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It was smoothed out pretty good. You had the ice skating rink, there was a problem there. That smoothed out. The North Bay problem, and the alderman and mayor handled the situation. And now you're getting back into the same thing. Why isn't it going to be handled already by the alderman and the mayor and the administrator? Now, why you better inbound the committee?
I'm just bringing forward ideas that were brought to me. I don't know if it, won't work perfect right now. I'm just thinking, I tend to belong with the, the people that think we should have a commission or a committee for further input. I like the idea of having more ideas come forward. And with the council being busy on many different issues, if we can have commissions to help do background work and possibly even find some funding if necessary, find where the interest is and assist the council in providing the best possible program. That's all I'm looking for. I'm not looking for somebody that wants to argue.
Not at all.
But I think one of the problems we had in the past was the way this section was written in the charter, is it supposedly gave the commission complete control over the parks but did not give them funding. And it shouldn't have been written that way because they didn't have the control.
Well, in other words, will the, will you and the administrators and the aldermen supervise this a little closer than it was supervised before?
Well...
In other words, know what's going on?
Certainly hope so.
Yeah.
As I'm, I'm looking, as I said, I'm looking for ideas. I want a group to come together with the best possible ideas. And then the council's going to have to make the decision on if these ideas are workable for the city and if we can fund them.
Well, that's what I'm looking for. In other words, if the thing will be run smooth and not be in a bunch of arguments about it. Think, because like I say, it's been handled pretty good as far as I'm concerned. And I heard a lot of arguments about this commissioner, the recreation committee and all that, as long as you people understand what's going on.
Just...
Because I think it's been handled pretty good in the past and it's settled down a little bit.
Well, Mr. Walsh...
I'm just putting lay-in, but it's all...
I think it is running pretty smooth right now. And I think by coming up with another committee or, this is just a way to get a handful more people involved to come up with different ideas. If you have the council and the administrator and the mayor all sitting down and they go to the earth thinking that we're going to do basketball, baseball, football and hockey, and they do that every year forever, if you bring in some more people...
That's what the committee's for.
Yeah, they can bring in, you know, a different sport or a different idea.
As long as it's handled in the right way.
I don't think it's going to be a problem because the, the description is going to be a lot different.
It's going to be a committee and not the other way around because I think it gives them a little more power. This way here, you people can handle a little better, better with a committee.
Yeah, I don't think it's going to be a problem because of the way it's written. You know, before, you know, the recreation commission had a lot of power and I think this time a lot of that's going to be nipped. So I don't think that, I don't think it's going to be the same problem it was.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mayor, one of the things I do appreciate and I like about this is that one person would be selected from a ward. I feel this would give us a better coverage of the various needs of each ward and a greater input of what the people want there and then we just could coordinate the whole thing to a better effort.
I think Mr. Walsh's concerns, I, I think that what we want to do is have more people involved and I think that, I know that it worked very effectively with the DPW advisory committee. I think you, were you on that committee?
No.
We had one person from every ward and, yeah, you were on the advisory, advisory board. But it came, it was originated from the, from the common council, from the DPW committee and then they sought more input. And they got, we selected one person from each ward and then we sat down and we, that gave us more people, more input. So I think that's, that's the concern that we're all hearing here is that we do want more people involved, but we don't want it to be, work backwards. We don't want it to come from the people to the council. I think that we want it from the council to the people. And there's certain projects that we need to work on and then you select the people that are going to help you with those.
I have no argument with that. That's what I'm referring to. You know, more input, if it's going to help, but run the right way.
We have received, in fact today, we just received a copy, you had a copy faxed into us of the local law that put a recreation board in for the city of Seneca Falls. It is supposed to be extremely good plan. We haven't even had time to look at it yet, but this is something that I want the council members to, to look at and digest along with another one, what, Geneva is, is the other one that we have?
Yeah, Geneva.
So there are some good laws without, within the state that we need to pattern ours after something that's going to work for, for us. We're not going to rewrite it or re-implement it just the way it was before. It is definitely going to change.
You know, Your Honor, years ago, I think during the Patrick administration, the first director, like Barry is now, was, was hired. Before that, the, the recreation department was run by recreation commission. And they put on, because I was a younger lad then, hanging around Fulton, and they put on block dances for the youth and we used to skate out on Sharp Pond. And we didn't have a person in Barry's position. That's who handled it. But I'm not quite sure it was set up the way this last commission was set up, you know? I think anytime the public gets the input, it will get handled better. I think what happened from me being on the council and some of the other councilmen, they just thought it was kind of spinning its wheels. What happened in the ice rink is a whole different thing. I don't really understand all of that and I never got into it because it, I got here afterwards and figured it concerned me and have other problems. But I think that, I think a committee or a commission of input from citizens that reflect the whole city might be good, you know? There's a, I think every councilman that's here now and everyone that's sitting in the audience now, although, wants to always hear about recreation. Everyone says there's nothing in the city for the kids to do, you know? And I think that's because everyone's children have different interests, you know? If they're not into hockey, if they're in hockey or something like that, they're happy. But if their children don't play hockey then, or if they don't play baseball or something like that, they feel there's nothing for them to do, you know? Theaters are gone. So it's, it's good. I mean, I'd like to see a lot of things, dances, movies, you know, everything else if we could do it. But none of it's free.
I've talked to the recreation superintendent and he has a number of programs. He told me that there's 20 major events that are scheduled for the community center. They've got almost 100% of projects, not projects, but activities ongoing. I wonder if I could have Barry just kind of allude to some of the things that are going on in the recreation department and also tell us his feelings. He's the one that's going to be the most affected by whether we have a committee or I think the biggest issues that we dealt with having the commission before was there, originally there was a liaison between me and, and the council. And of course, the problems that existed there is they were empowered to make decisions and try to run the department but had no control over the budgetary needs of the department. And it's up to me to spend the money where needed. They were to act as an advisory group, but they needed direction from the mayor and the council as to what their actual duties were and they never really had a full, there was a lot of gray material within their duties because as Ron said, that was written before the department ever had a department head. And in fact, the commission actually ran the department years ago and they did have a budget to operate out of and they were responsible for that spending. Since that, times have changed. The department's gotten much bigger and their roles have changed. And the fact with the committee, there's pros and cons, I guess, to anything you do when, when you design a committee. The vast difference between opinions, sometimes too many opinions can be bureaucratic. Then again, you need the diversity within, within the city as far as different kinds of programs, interests and tastes of your public and what they want. And those are the good things. A big asset would be to have a group that is going to be a functioning group and want to get out and actually be hands-on. People who want to volunteer their time and be an extension for my department to incorporate help, incorporate new programs, help improve old programs that we currently have. Currently, we've, we've reached a point where we're very limited in, into what we can do now because we've grown so much over the past few years. We've definitely run that War Memorial around the clock now. I think if anybody is familiar with anything going on around the War Memorial, they'll see that from 8:00 in the morning to 10:00 at night, seven days a week, that, that place is running. We've incorporated new adult programs. We have outreach programs that now extend into the school facilities. And we can incorporate more programs to maybe outside of recreational needs and maybe get into educational needs, that we could utilize some classrooms within the school. It's very difficult to find any kind of gym space to run any kind of programs that are associated with athletic type events. We're very limited in, in facilities there because we share with the school district and they're limited as well with their athletic programs. They all kind of operate during the same time. So gym space is a difficult thing. We've run across... So, gym space is a difficult thing we've run across. We've incorporated new programs for the summer and expanded on, on different programs to, to run in conjunction with existing programs so they don't overlap. That way we hit any low periods throughout the week or, you know, whatever it may be to cover as much ground as we can in the city and as many diverse backgrounds and age groups as we possibly can. We do continue to, to grow as well as with the campground. The facilities down there have been improved, have increased our occupancy rate there. We think all of our, our programs in general, the numbers have, have gone way up and we continue to do that and I know they're going to continue to grow. The department has definitely taken 180-degree turn from what it was four years ago. And we, we've got a good foundation. We have a lot of good quality programs and they're only going to get better. I think if we get a good active committee that wants to be an extension from the department and assist me, because I'm, I have limited resources, this will give me more resources within the community. It gives us more hands-on people who actually want to, instead of offering their suggestions, actually get involved. Maybe help develop fundraisers, maybe help actually want to chaperone certain programs and assist us in that. Or maybe go out and find some people that might want to generate new programs for us and help us run those programs. Those are the kind of people, and that's the kind of board that we're looking for, the kind of people we're looking for are actually going to get their hands dirty. I currently serve on a board where I'm an active member, where I go out and try to assist the group, whether I set up different events forum or whatever it may be, but I actually get involved as, as a working member of the board. I think that would be a benefit to our department, to the city, if we could generate a committee of that sense, instead of an advisory board that's going to come in once a month and then tell me, "We should do this, we should do that." And then not do anything about it and expect me to carry the entire burden. I mean, I'm only one person and we are, as far as an operating department, very small but very diverse and very strong as far as amount that we cover for the size of our actual department. And having a committee like this would definitely expand our resources and I think that's what we need. It also gives the recreation a little bit more foundation, stronger foundation, to build a better rapport with our community. That's what we tried to establish from the beginning, was to incorporate the community. It'd be a whole community-type event within the department. That's something that I always wanted to do when I first took, took over as the director, was not only to involve the city, but the community residents as well because that's the people that we're actually serving. So, they should have input to what kind of programs they want available. After all, they're, you know, they're paying for, from their tax dollars. Anything else?
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Thanks.
Good evening. I thought Barry was trying to filibuster there. Just a moment to say to each and every one of you, congratulations on your successful campaign this past November. In a sense, if the people were not asking for change, they may well have been asking for change. And so, with regard to a recreation committee slash commission, I think it's up to each and every one of you to make that decision and I encourage a lively debate over this. To answer a remark that was made earlier, the Recreation Commission was constituted in 1936 in this city. I was born in 1950. I've lived here all my life. I've never heard of problems with the Recreation Commission and the city, any arguments and so forth. What occurred two years ago was probably a private agenda. Okay, we are past that now. I would remind people in this building that the Recreation Commission brought to this city, the Fulton Community Center. They, they did the legwork on it, they did the grant fund work on it and so forth. It was the commission's insight that brought that and Bob Burley was the charge of that. So, whatever occurred two years ago, we're past that now. But what we need to look at is the future of recreation in this city. I just have a couple of pointers for you people. You must keep in mind that each and every one of you are not, are not going to be here four, six, 10, 12 years down the road. Neither will the mayor be here. So, you need to, when you devise whatever you're going to do, committee slash commission, keep in mind that a group such as a committee has to be autonomous. They must work within themselves. They cannot be controlled by an outside force. Now, to answer Bob's question, within the general municipal law itself, a committee or commission cannot be paid. That's, that's already written within the law. I know within our city, we have been paying commissioners $10 a month for whatever reason. So, I'm sure whoever is chosen for these positions won't be asking for $10. But I do believe, and it's my personal opinion, that a commission, and I would prefer a commission, be an autonomous group. They are answerable to the director or the superintendent of recreation who in turn is answerable to the mayor of this city. It is these people that are going to devise new recreational plans for the city. And far be it for me to sit down and volunteer hours and hours of work to, to come up with a plan, to bring it to a common council, not necessarily this one, but anyone in the future, and somebody without any basic knowledge can shoot it down. I mean, if you've ever been on a committee of that, that nature, you know how it will affect you. So, I advise, my only opinion would be that you consider a commission and make them as autonomous as possible. Two years ago, I, when we had this problem, I researched, I got 15 different local laws from 15 different municipalities. And my belief was Seneca Falls, the town of, had an ideal local law for a recreation commission. I believe it's on your tables now. You should review it. Again, I encourage a lively debate amongst the council itself before you arrive at a decision. Thank you.
I want to commend Barry Ostrander for the fine job he has done over the last four years and to congratulate him on the immense developments that he's brought forth. I have nothing specific against the commission other than Article 13 of general municipal law specifically gives them authority and powers that I think would take away from Mr. Ostrander. When you talk about building bureaucracy, I think that's what you're doing. You're building another bureaucracy. I think Barry hit it on the head. What he needs is people with hands-on. An example is what happened at Culett Park in the 4th Ward when C.V. Abbott, the, the family of C.V. Abbott decided they wanted a memorial playground and when Alva raised the funds to do it, collected $70,000 and put their own labor into developing and building that playground, which is the most-used playground in this community. And I think Barry would substantiate that. We probably need more of them and if we had the same kind of assistance from people in the community via a committee or advisory group, anything other than a commission because of Article 13. That's what scared us off and I think the committee, the committee could help Barry immensely in fulfilling the kinds of programs he would like to see continued. Thank you.
Ryan, do you want to vote on this tonight or do you, if you have a proposal for a committee or commission or?
No.
With, with the additional information that we just got today and just disseminated to you today, I don't think that this is going to be possible. I wanted to have all this information, allow you to peruse it and make a decision in the future. We tried to get this information earlier and due to the holiday and everything, it didn't come through until today.
Okay, that's all right. I just wanted to know if you want us to digest it tonight and vote some other time or?
No, I think there's more information you're going to have to look at.
Yeah. Recreation's always been kind of a controversial thing. It doesn't seem like it is, but I can remember before Burner got out and right after I got in, in, in Ward that Holly's in now, it used to be Kathy's Ward, the Lions wanted to build a playground just like C.V. Abbott's and we ended up buying a police dog for drugs because nobody wanted to park up there for the kids. They wanted to see the trees instead. So, you run into problems both ways. My vote would have been to see the kids playing up in the park, but the, the public didn't want it. It's really a funny thing. You remember that, Joe?
Yeah.
I was shocked and amazed. I mean, we had a group that cared so much to do something so wonderful and people didn't want it. So, it's quite controversial, no matter whether you think it is or not, but I think still whether it be a committee or a commission, I think public input is good because I hear a lot about recreation, you know? Because some kids always fall into the cracks or some group of kids is and maybe we can do a little bit more with what we have.
Declare the hearing closed.
It is resolved that this common council defers any action on this proposed local law until a future meeting.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Carey. Number four.
It is resolved that the following claims are referred to our city attorney. Letter of claim submitted by John Cesarek. Letter of claim submitted by Bradley Cook. Letter of claim submitted by Barbara Cali. Letter, letter of claim submitted by Valia Cardinelli. Letter of claim submitted by Chad Ryan Arnold. Letter of judgment, Small Claims Court Fred Wilber. Letter of claim submitted by Ms. Marjorie Chubb. Letter of claim submitted by Francis, Francine Canelli. Letter of claim submitted by Darcy Dorval. And letter of claim submitted by Veronica, Veronica Siderici.
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Carey. Number five.
Whereas the City of Fulton Common Council proposes to undertake certain transportation, streetscape and waterfront improvements known as the Fulton Bridge-to-Bridge Project, the proposed action. Whereas the Common Council desires to serve as lead agency for the purpose of conducting an environmental review of the proposed action in accordance with SEACER regulations. Whereas no other involved agencies have expressed a desire to serve as lead agency. And whereas pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEACER 6 NYCRR Part 617, the Common Council has classified the project as an unlisted action. Whereas the Common Council has prepared and considered a short environmental assessment form and other documents pertaining to the proposed action. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City of Fulton Common Council hereby declares itself lead agency for the purpose of processing the proposed action in accordance with the requirements of SEACER. And be it further resolved that based upon the Common Council's review of the short environmental assessment form in supporting documentation and the recommendations which the Common Council has received thereon, the Common Council hereby adopts the attached positive declaration form for the reasons stated therein, thereby finding that the proposed action may have a significant effect upon the environment. And be it further resolved that the Common Council requires the preparation of a draft generic environmental impact statement regarding the proposed action. Be it further resolved that the Common Council hereby directs its consultant to file the positive declaration and draft scope of issues to be addressed in the environmental impact statement with the agencies and persons listed thereon and to file a notice of the positive declaration with the environmental notice bulletin. Be it further resolved, the Common Council hereby solicits from the public and involved agencies comments regarding the scope of issues to be addressed in the environmental impact statement. And be it further resolved that the Common Council sets January 26, 1998, as a final date by which comments regarding the scope of issues to be addressed in the environmental impact statement shall be accepted by the Common Council for inclusion in the environmental impact statement.
I'll move it.
When you adopt the resolution that Joe has just read, it authorizes the city to act as the lead agency in the SEACER process. That's the State Environmental Quality Review process. A positive declaration requires the scoping process. That's the document that you were all given at the last CDA meeting that you were asked to take a look at. We have copies up here for the public as well. The positive declaration is, as a, as a response to the traffic issues. That would be, I believe it's Article 7. Each of these items will be addressed through the process, through the SEACER process. The transportation services, existing conditions, each of those areas of concern will have to be addressed. I think what we're looking for tonight is public input, council input. This is a question session only. There are no answers. We're going to take all your questions. We're going to record, send them off to be a part of the process. It has to be in written form. We would expect to receive all comments by the 26th and along with the traffic study that's underway, along with the surveying that's being done in the downtown area now, all of these other issues will also be addressed as well. But we need to get those issues on the table and that's what the public process is about. So, with that having been said, if you would like to pass a resolution and then open it to public comments or comment first and pass the resolution, it makes no difference. We're going to be recording and as I said, we have no answers. We would just like some questions.
Questions? We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carey. Now we have questions. Just something I picked up on the first page of this under two proposed action, 1A. Onida Street reopening?
I think he meant First Street.
Oh, thank you.
A little bit of a tight.
Maybe somebody saw this and the question I asked you earlier?
It's a good question. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah. Yeah, that's a good question. The hot projects are South First Street reopening, Kiuga Street reopening, the Canal Landing Plaza, the Marina improvements and the Gateway Intersection improvements, which have to do with the areas of 481, the bridge at Onida and Broadway. They will be looking at land use, zoning issues, community services, fiscal issues, environmental resources, historic and archaeological, I believe we'll have to do archaeological study as well because there might be an area within our community, which we just got Parks and Recs letter today. Transportation Services, they consider the one item that will probably have the most comments because of the traffic issues involved. And as I said, the traffic study is underway, but if anyone else has comments about any of those issues, if they don't want to make them this evening, we would be happy to receive them by mail at our office or in the mayor's office or at the city clerk's office. We will gather them up and ship them off to the architect and we will put them into the SEACER process in written form and we'll try to address all the issues that are brought up.
Carol, if, if everything was done here that's in this scope, like if Kiuga Street and First Street and the Plaza and all that was done, what would our local share be? What would be paid for out of a grand? What would the local cost be to the local taxpayer?
On, on projects themselves, Ron, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, well, I mean, and the whole project, is, is it totally a grant fund?
The infrastructure, the infrastructure improvements are all grant funding. That's one-way grant funding. There will be some local dollars involved in relocation of some of the utilities in the downtown area, maybe some of the hydrants.
Under the streets, like First Street.
Things under the streets. If we get in there and we find there's a bad water line or things like that, those dollars weren't built into this. There's some contingency money available. If we didn't have to use it in the actual construction, we might be able to tap into that to do those kinds of things. But there was always intended to be some local participation and it was in that.
Well, I knew that, but I just was looking for a dollar figure because I'm sure someone's going to ask me or the mayor or somebody. The other thing, on the First Street, you were looking at two-way, but is, can that be changed to one-way if we need to do that?
Yeah, that's why the.
I mean, that's, we're not locked into that. I mean, we're not locked into that.
No, that's one of the comments we want to hear tonight, though, as a matter of fact, Ron.
Otherwise, we can build that street for two-way.
We're planning for two-way, yes.
And then we could, we could make it one way to the south or something and put diagonal or something like that.
And all of those things are being addressed. The parking issues have been discussed before, the diagonal parking, those are all a part of this process. It's all in the process of putting together the plans and specs. Those things are all being addressed.
Same with the direction of traffic flowing Keuga Street, maybe you could go one way, the other way, instead of backing up on 41.
Right, and I think part of those discussions will happen with DOT as well because they have a real interest in this process. I believe they're sharing the lead agency status with us, as a matter of fact, so. Thank you, that's, that's a good comment.
And you need all input by next Monday.
By the 26th.
Twenty-sixth.
Is there any land acquisition down there that we have to do, or is it all ours? I mean, I thought that Keuga Street was, was taken back over by the building owners down there. I thought that was originally abandoned by the city. Do we still own that right away through there?
Yeah, you, you own all the mall areas. That's why you're responsible for keeping them clean all the time. There will be one parcel for sale, and that's the, there are actually three redevelopment parcels south of Ryan's Cafe. They will be for sale to a developer for either a commercial revival, or a commercial or.
That open area.
Restaurant facility.
Yeah.
Who's going to determine which, which, if they're, if they're going to be one-way streets, who's going to determine that?
Um.
Like First Street, for instance, who's?
Can we do that locally, I think is what you're saying.
Right now, I think, Mark, the plan is to open it to two-way street if it's at all feasible. I mean, that's what it's being designed for, that's what the optimum is. If it doesn't work as a two-way street, then I guess we all go back to the drawing board. It's part of the, probably part of the transportation study, part of the study that's being done now, especially at Keuga Street. That's going to be one of the big question areas. We've talked about that before. DOT is going to be very interested in which way the traffic flows, whether or not they even want that street reopened again. So that's part of the traffic study that's being done now. That would be something that I think would have to be a wait-and-see kind of a thing, that if we had problems, we would have to do some additional studies and decide as a local body what you want to do.
Yeah, well, there's going to be two or three traffic devices down there, and they're kind of expensive, you know? Probably one at Oneida and First, maybe Rochester because of the, yeah, high-rise there, and certainly one on Keuga and 41. So really, we ought to look at that fairly close for, because I mean, they're not cheap, a couple hundred grand a piece.
Absolutely. Plus, you're going to want to look at some, maybe even some stop signs throughout downtown, throughout First Street when it gets open for pedestrian safety.
They're a little easier to put in and out than a traffic light.
Yeah, they are, a little less costly.
A little cheaper. Carol, one question, please. Is there any possibility of getting, receiving additional state money due to the fact that we have three atomic plants in Oswego? 481 coming through the city would be certainly an evacuation route.
The money that we have on 481 is just for those gateway intersections. It would, might entail cutting back of some of the curb area to put in another turning lane, something like that, widening. I think probably not within, certainly not within this particular grant, and I don't know whether improvements to the street, to the streetscape kinds of things would hold any water with getting additional funding. We're certainly going to look at that to see if there might be some ice tea or something like that to enhance the project.
Thank you.
Questions on traffic? If you would, if you have any comments, we would hope to receive them in our office, in the mayor's office, or in the city clerk's office, in written form, if possible, by the 26th. Thank you.
When is that construction date down there, the startup date?
Probably around middle May.
Middle May.
To be done by late fall.
Right, that's pretty.
It'll be an exciting summer.
Sure will. A couple of us are going to get some calls, probably.
Yeah, the Alderman and the Fifth and Sixth Lords, I said, I will, assume will be very busy.
What's she going to do to parking while you're doing that, Carol? That hasn't already been done.
Yeah. Worse yet, we're, we've talked about this before, we're going to try to accommodate. We have some very nice special functions that have happened over the past several years in our community. One is Jazz Fest, and the other one is the Lions Club, Duck Derby on Labor Day, and we are somehow going to still accommodate those two as well. So you'll probably, we hope to have a field office within the downtown as well. We'll be having promotional things to try to get people to come downtown, so it should be a fun experience.
Let's try to get it all done this year.
Just remind everybody, there are copies of the scoping document up here, if you care to take them with you and comment. Item six.
Whereas the New York State Department of Transportation will be resurfacing Route Three in the City of Fulton, scheduled for March 26, letting day, 1998, whereas this project will necessitate the adjustment of water valve covers and sanitary sewer manual covers within the project. Now therefore be resolved that the mayor is hereby authorized to sign any and all agreements with the New York State Department of Transportation relative to the resurfacing of State Route Three.
Motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item seven.
Notation that the appointment by Mayor Stafford of the following standing committees of the Fulton Common Council effective January 1, 1998, and expiring December 31, 1999, are hereby entered in the midst of this council meeting of January 20 as a matter of record. Medical insurance, Alderman Woodward, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Weston, city clerk, city insurance broker, and citizen. Public works, Alderman Lincoln, Alderman Sahaski, Alderman Weston, DPW Commissioner. Labor management and safety, Alderman Lincoln, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Sherman, executive assistant to the mayor, civil service secretary, four CSEA members. Finance and audit, Alderman Lincoln, Alderman Woodward, Alderman Thompson, city chamberlain, executive assistant to the mayor. Grievance, Alderman Sahaski, Alderman Woodward, Alderman Weston, executive assistant to the mayor, civil service secretary, city attorney. Water and sewer, Alderman Lincoln, Alderman Woodward, Alderman Sherman, water and sanitation commissioner. Planning, Alderman Sahaski, Alderman Sherman, Alderman Thompson, code enforcement bureau chief and code enforcement officer. Legislative, Alderman Sahaski, Alderman Thompson, Alderman Sherman, city attorney. Recreation, Alderman Sherman, Alderman Sahaski, Alderman Weston, recreation superintendent. Lighting, Alderman Woodward, Alderman Lincoln, Alderman Weston, and executive assistant to the mayor.
I'd like to make a comment before we vote. I, I looked at all these committees, and I know we've added some to what the list we had. I spoke to the majority leader, as the minority leader, I spoke to the majority leader, and, and I thought there was, it might be a good idea. I urged him to consider possibly the council meeting in a workshop with a better clarification of the purposes of each individual committee. I think some of them are naturally self-explanatory, others we would need clarification on. I'm not sure what planning involves, I'm not sure what legislative committee involves. So I think it would be a good educational thing for the council to know exactly what those committees will be doing, what their responsibilities are, and what their, their goals are.
Would you like to do that workshop prior to a common council meeting? Your pleasure?
You could, yeah.
Scheduled for the next meeting, uh, at 3:00.
That'd be good.
What, at 6 o'clock?
If that's good, if that's good with everybody else.
It's fine with me.
Six o'clock? At 3:00? Motion?
There's no motion.
Next notation, okay.
Resolved that the city, excuse me.
Item eight.
Resolved that the city clerk as record management officer for the City of Fulton, New York, be authorized to dispose of records that no longer have a purposeful use, full or legal purpose, in accordance with laws of the State Education Department and the MU1 schedule.
Motion?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item nine.
Resolved that the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Scott Pelosi's 365 Park Street as Commissioner of Deeds is hereby approved.
I'll move it. Need a second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry.
Resolved that the city clerk be authorized and directed to advertise for a public hearing to be held on February 3, 1990. February 3, 1998, at 7:00 PM in the common council chambers in the municipal building, relative to a proposed local law which would add a new section to Chapter 120 of the Property Conservation Code, subsection 120-51-0 regarding the piling of snow.
Hold it. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Item 10.
Notation that the city clerk has advised this common council at this meeting of January 20 that the proper letter of disclosure pursuant to Section 803 of general municipal law has been filed with him as a matter of record. Ronald Cressler, Water Department, R&amp;R Automotive and Tire. Resolved that the common council at their meeting of January 6, 1998, referred to zone change requests submitted by Mr. Francis Marbido for a change of zone from R3 Residential to C1 Commercial for his property located at 1013 Emery Street, and a portion of his adjacent property located at 1019 Emery Street to the planning commission. Whereas a planning commission at their meeting of January 12, 1998 unanimously passed a recommendation to the common council that 1013 Emery Street and a portion of 1019 Emery Street with approximately 100 foot of frontage on the 1019 Emery Street parcel be incorporated into one parcel, and that the zoning for the entire parcel be changed from R3 Residential to C1 Commercial with a stipulation that a survey be provided prior to the public hearing. Now therefore be it resolved that this common council hereby agrees with the recommendation of the planning commission and directs the city clerk to advertise for a public hearing to be held on February 3, 7:00 PM in the council chambers, municipal building, at 7:00 PM relative to said zone change request as recommended by the planning commission.
I'll move that.
I have a question.
I'll second it.
What, did we receive the survey?
Do we have the survey?
I thought I gave you one out.
No, they, at the planning commission, they required a survey. You have given that one. We will, we will have that, make sure we have that by the public hearing.
We have a motion and second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next item.
Resolved that the appointment by Mayor Stafford of Cheryl Ritchie, 217 Oneida Street, Fulton, New York, as Commissioner of Deeds is hereby approved.
Motion?
I'll move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Resolved that the city chamberlain be authorized to transfer $1,000 from the A19 10.4412 unallocated insurance account to the A12 10.4600 travel account.
I'll move it.
That is transferring from the unallocated insurance account, which has a balance, to the mayor's account, subhead for travel and training, that there was no money put in the original budget.
Are you going to Lahana's or?
No, as a matter of fact, Saturday, I'll be in Albany at a conference at night time.
We have a motion.
We have a motion.
Move it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry. Do any of the council members care to bring forth any information?
Mayor?
Yes.
First of all, during the so-called crisis we had with the snow, I certainly want to thank the, the police, the fire, the water department, the public works, and every other kind of department that was involved. I feel that we had prompt action, good action, quick action, resolving the problems that initiated at that time. A few things I do want to mention as far as the second ward is concerned, and some of the calls that I did have. One was a flooding of the backyard. Appropriate letters were sent out. I assumed the problem was taken care of since I did not receive a follow-up call. At the community center, a problem with the, the shower and restroom in the women's lounge. Whenever I saw Barry, he showed me that facility. It has been renovated and met approval of ADA. One other thing, and I placed a recorder in, as far as right outside of the community center, the handicap ramp is deteriorating, and I think very, very quick action should be taken because that's a serious, serious problem, especially with people in a wheelchair, walker, crutches, or any other. I had one sore backup call. Prompt action was taken by our city on that. I had one call, a call more or less of advice, the individual stating to me that maybe to prevent the backup, that maybe looking at a check valve that would have to be looked into. Then the judge also mentioned to me, there was a tree removed by St. Michael's Church, and I believe right now we have to put in proper fill. It seems to be, it wasn't done correctly at that time. Another call referring to Cedar Street between dealing appropriately with the high school at the high speed and reckless driving. The woman was almost hit, and she was, she had a little child with her. I spoke with the principal about this. Thank you.
I also, of course, with the, with the flooding in the third ward, and I want to also thank the, all the different city departments that responded so well, the quick action prevented a lot more flooding, and I had a numerous calls from those people that were taken care of, and a fast action was taken right away, and it prevented further damage to their property. So I certainly want to comment, I don't know if the mayor's, I'd let the mayor comment also, but I, I know that I'm excited, and everybody else in the city is excited at the news that we got today at 12 o'clock at a press conference, and I think that once again, I think, I also want to, I'm happy for the town of Albany. I think they've had some, some things go against them recently, but this is a big plus for them, and it's a big plus for our city, and I think we can continue to be very optimistic and very positive with all the things that are happening. It's certainly great news and a different kind of news. It's, video and movie production is something that we're not used to.
And one note on that, Bob, they also said that they would hire as many local people as possible, so that's, that would be a big plus for this area.
Well, I too would like to commend our city departments. First, with the heavy snow that we got, the DPW stayed on top of it, where Syracuse was complaining all the time that they were in trouble. Our DPW, over the same length of time, got almost the same amount of snow and kept the streets open, did a fantastic job. And then once the thaw came, and the rains came, and the flooding came, the morning I arrived here, I got together with the fire chief, water and sanitation commissioner, DPW commissioner. They all worked together right from the get-go, put all their crews out, opened up as many storm sewers as they possibly could, and just worked around the clock to take care of the problem.
Some days, we have good days, and some days, we have great days. And for Fulton, and Albany, and central New York, this was a great day. This Riverview Incorporated that is purchasing the Miller site, and is going to turn it into a worldwide video and film production facility. It's just outstanding. I don't know how anything could be better for that site. We are going into a new industry there, an industry that's not going to have much, if any, environmental adverse impact. It's not gonna be production. We're gonna start getting away from the production jobs that we have had. We are gonna have more high-tech jobs here, and craftsman jobs. And the possibilities that are gonna open up for this area are just tremendous. If this works, the way this company sees it working, I see tremendous growth in this area. We're going to need more hotels, we're going to need more restaurants, and it's just gonna bring so much business to the city. And it is so positive, I don't think it could be any better. And one of the best parts about this is this company was put together after they saw the brewery, went and looked at the brewery, brought in people from across the country in the entertainment business, and looked at it, and said, "This is a hidden gem." And then went out and got the financing for it. And it's all private financing, they haven't come to any government entity at this time and said, "We've got a good idea, we need your help." They're doing this all with private money. This is great. Do we have any comments?
In case anybody was wondering what kinda movies they're making, they did state that they're not XXX with their family or anything.
No, no, definitely not.
No chance, Bob. Not to be in movies.
No one has any points to bring up?
No, your honor, one thing I'd like to ask, uh, we have our code enforcement chief here, and we passed a new sign ordinance last year, and, uh, I went on, as well as rest of council, and I think in a lot of respects it was good. But I've had some complaints from some business people that are on 481 but are located like off on the side street, and I'm not sure how we get them to advertise our business on the street, but it's, I don't know, I kinda like to look at that again, and see if we could accommodate. But, which obviously, we want more business than just what faces 481 that you can hang on a, a building. I'm not sure how to, how we can do it, but we wanna be able to advertise anyone that's here. Dan, yeah, you, you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about. One of the problems with 481, um, I've got lots of suggestions, 'cause it's, it's a state highway, and the right-of-way is a state right-of-way, therefore, it would be up to them, lots can go into those alongside the road.
All right, other words, we, if, if, if some of those businesses, like saying face, just as an example.
Face?
Yeah, let's say in a mall, like, I'm sorry, I could, in that mall there, um-
I don't see.
Okay, if they wanted to have some type of an advertisement, they can fund their ad code on the 41, would they have to come to us, or just to, uh, state?
Well, they're putting it on the right-of-way, they'd have to go to the state, and I can tell you right now, the state will not allow it. They have not allowed anything in the right-of-way for up to one year now. They're really getting-
Nothing.
Nothing, absolutely nothing. I mean, they had three people, I got a, uh, Black Boss is a good example, they wanted their sign, uh, they were putting a sign up, and they said, "No, uh, they're sub- loaned." It's a real problem, because they won't allow anyone to put anything in the right-of-way anymore. There's nothing to, but Face could have it on their property, I use Face to show the ownership.
Yeah, well, that's, I've been going there every year, you know.
Ackerts and that class. Uh, they, they tried to get the owner to put up a, a combination sign whereby everybody could advertise on one side, which would be permitted, but the owners would fit them, so that's where the problem is.
Well, I think some of the merchants would do it, I'm wondering if they could do something, is that Division Street there? That street that goes up by the hospital?
Yeah.
I mean, even if you went back in a little ways that way, but there's other people too, not just them.
Oh, I know.
You know what I'm saying?
But if you're putting it in the right-of-way, they have to go to the state, I had no jurisdiction.
No, but I'm saying, I'm saying if it come off, off 481 right-of-way, like, when you're looking at that, like, here's 481, and, and Division comes in this way, you could still see it both ways off 481 if you come in on our right-of-way there.
I understand. Are you saying that you want to put in our right-of-way?
Well, I kinda like to keep the business here, and if people don't know they're there, they can't shop there, you know what I'm saying?
What, what we're looking at is, does present sign ordinance that we have prevent them from putting a sign not on state right-of-way but visible out by 481?
No.
They can't put a sign up there as long as it's on private property, not on state right-of-way.
Right, that means the requirements for the amount of signage they can add based on the size of the frontage of the building. There's rules that-
Actually, it wouldn't be in the front of the building, Dan, the building's back off the street, you understand what I'm saying? But they need to get out where the traffic area is. They still could be on a private property, but what I'm saying is, it wouldn't be in front of their building. It would be more or less a sign advertising something was in that mall.
Are there different rules for, like, a mall where you have a number of different shops where they could list?
If they combine whatever they have in lineal, depends on, first of all, depends on how many feet are from the center of the road, and they're over 150 feet, so, therefore, they get 1.5, um, square feet for every lineal foot of lawn up the front of that building, or on any side that faces the street, or two sides. So, they could come down, take the calculation across the front, all the way on 481, and Division Street, okay? And that, then, is, when you get that final figure, whatever that is, then you divide that by two, and that's allowed in one sign out front, a post-sign on the property, total square feet wise. That helps calculate. So, they could do it, but right now, the problem they have is Carousel, or, not Carousel, Carvel already spent their money, did their big sign, they have an individual sign, the other place did an individual sign. Now, we have the two people that moved in on Division Street, which I know, they don't have any place to advertise, you know, other than up above where we allowed them to advertise, you know, but you can't see that real well from the street before any one, and that's what they want, they wanna be able to pick that up. And they went to the owner, and I guess you couldn't get all parties together to go to a joint sign. Uh, if you could work on that one, Ron, that'd be great, and I, I don't know any answers to rather than that, but you can have a sign there.
Just on a building now, right? I mean, or other than a-
On a post-sign in the yard, you can also have a post-sign in the yard. We didn't do this calculation, but-
If, my name is Daryl Heaton, I have a business on the side. If there are permits or ways to do it, when you come down to City Hall with the code enforcement people, it would be nice if they would tell us how to go about doing it. Before, the answer I got, we just couldn't do it. And I won't tell you what the other answer was I got, but I went down looking for information, what I had to do to reach codes, try to do it legally, and not put a bunch of junky old signs up, and all I was looking for is some direction, how to go about doing it. And I at least appreciate this new, uh, the new council working with me to try to come up with some answers, how I could get a sign, because everybody coming to my shop says, "We don't even know you're here." And it would be nice to have some other recognition, because you put it in the newspapers, nobody knows. When people are going down the street, they do know you're there if they see a str- a sign out on the street. I would put the sign up myself. Mr. Porter, if he didn't wanna spend the money, if I had some direction to put it up, that is what I couldn't get. This is the first I've heard, if we do it the proper way, we can do it. If I know I can do it, know what to do, then I'll go ahead and try to get it put up. Thank you.
Daryl, um, you're a hell of a mature man, I didn't mean to bypass him, but, Mark, you have to understand, I worked for Daryl for about 10 years, so, he talks to me a lot, and most of his family lives in my ward. But, uh, I, if you get with Mark, and I think Mark could get, you do three years, you and Mark and Dan get together, he'd probably show you, you know, there's probably some way you can do it. I was really upset, 'cause I was down at Daryl's shop over the holidays, and I got to view firsthand some of what he pays in sales tax in the city, and it just upset me to think that there was so much business that he was losing, and people were telling him that, that he's losing, 'cause they don't know he's there. Not everybody picks up a flyer somewhere, you know? And collectibles is a big treat today.
I'll be glad to talk to you, Jim, I'm sorry.
No, Dan, I, I, I didn't mean to, there's criticism to you, but I was just amazed, shocked to find out that we, we put something in that's, that's detrimental to the business rather than, than beneficial. And he's not the only one I heard it from, by the way.
Anything else? Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
All right, you're in.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none? Adjourn. The new cabinet.